I'd like to call the May 7th Board of Commissioners to order. The first order of business is invocation by our county manager, Mr. David Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Please bless us with wisdom, guidance, and your leadership as the Board deliberates the items on tonight's agenda. Lord, this month we celebrate the contributions and achievements of older Americans. Thank you for the decades of experience and years of life they have shared with us, for they have served as role models for future generations. Encourage them to stay engaged, active, and involved in their own lives and our community. Father, we pray for the men and women in our armed forces who serve our country with tremendous courage, commitment, and sacrifice. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. We will continue to thank you and praise you for the blessings you have bestowed upon us. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here tonight, hear us in a moment of silence. Amen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Cotton. Now, pleasure allegiance by Deputy County Manager, Ms. Sharon Russell.
Pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome the sheriff tonight, Sheriff Hans Miller, our elected official. I don't think I've, I don't see anyone else. We ask that all in attendance please set your cellphones to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public two opportunities to speak during the meeting. Comments during the first public comment period should be limited to three minutes each and must be directly issue-oriented with the agenda items for this particular meeting. The second public comment period is at the end of the meeting and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. During the second public comment period, citizens can address the Board for up to five minutes each. Citizen speakers will be acknowledged in order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the Board as a whole and not to one individual commissioner. Speakers will address the Board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room and will begin their remarks by stating their name and their address. Discretion between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Public comment is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. Any comments where the primary purpose is to promote a business or candidacy shall not be allowed. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules and procedures, commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the commissioners' comment period on the agenda, and that's at the end of the meeting. With no other items being considered separately, a motion to adopt the meeting agenda is in order.
Motion to adopt the agenda?
I hear a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item two is, if the consent agenda, is there any item that any of the commissioners would like to have removed?
I'd like to make a motion to remove item 2F, authorize a signature and checks and drafts, and consider separate as item 7A.
Now I need a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Motion to adj, uh, we need a second on, the second for the motion to remove item 2F.
Okay. All in favor of removing that item?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, say aye. Thank you. We are now at item three, which would be public comment section. Mr. Cotton, has anyone signed up for the first section of public comment?
No, sir, no one has signed up.
Item four is presentations. Mr. Cotton, will you read the proclamation?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, proclamation, Older Americans Month 2018. Whereas older Americans have fortified our country and shaped our world, making groundbreaking discoveries, pioneered new industries, and strengthened communities; and whereas during Older Americans Month, we show our support and appreciation for those individuals who, with decades of experience and unyielding enthusiasm, continue to lift up our neighborhoods, offer perspectives on pressing challenges, and serve as role models to future generations. And whereas this year's theme for Older Americans Month, "Engage at Every Age," emphasizes that you are never too old or young to take part in activities that can enrich your physical, mental, and emotional well-being. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners declares the month of May as Older Americans Month in Onslow County, and urges all citizens to pay tribute to our parents, grandparents, friends, neighbors, and every senior near our hearts, and further urges citizens to take advantage of the many resources our community has to offer, presented this seventh day of May, 2018. The chairman requests that Commissioner Bennett present the proclamation.
I'm not sure how you define an older American, but I am sure that based on what I saw at the Senior Olympics a few weeks ago that our county recreation department put on in senior services, some of those older Americans are pretty tough folks, so we appreciate what they do and we appreciate the opportunity to honor them for this month.
We're just thankful for the proclamation, and we hope that all senior citizens in the community take the opportunity to come out and visit us at senior services to see what we have to offer. Thank you.
Item number five, public hearing, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Rezoning case, P R E Z, Tac 2018, Tac 00002. I will call on Mr. Ben Warren to offer a staff introduction.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cotton. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman and Commissioners. For your consideration this evening, we have a petition that was submitted by Mr. Rufus and Ms. Sharon Murray for a potential rezoning of parcel 772-164 to change the property zoning from residential 20, R 20, to rural agricultural, R A, and the parcel consists of approximately 2.10 acres. There is an unwasse four-inch water line that serves the property, and currently there is no sewer available. Turkey Creek Volunteer Fire Department would provide fire service. They currently have an ISO rating of six. And the closest street that provides access that is accounted for in the N C D O T average annual daily traffic counts is the Old Fort Stone Road, which has an average vehicle trips per day of 6,000 and a capacity of 12,000. Just taking a look at the surrounding zoning, the area that is in the green is the rural agricultural. The darker navy blue is the R 20. So the property in question is bordered on one side by R 20, the other three by the requested R A zoning. The site is currently wooded and vacant, and as we look at some of the surrounding uses along Old Fort Stone Road, the primary use in this area is single-family residential. In comparing the two districts, the current R 20 allows a minimum lot size of 2,000 square feet, two dwelling units per acre, and is primarily intended for single-family uses with some supporting uses such as recycling facilities or public community centers, things of a low-scale type supporting use. And the R A zoning district requires a larger minimum lot size and lower density, but the R A zoning district itself also allows multifamily manufactured homes in a number of non-residential type uses. Looking at the future land use map, this entire area along Old Fort Stone Road is recommended for medium-density residential. And looking at the corresponding zoning districts, the requested R A zoning district is a district that does correspond with the M D R, medium-density residential category, in the future land use map. So in taking a look at that, the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and is also considered reasonable because of the proximity of existing R A zoning in the vicinity of the rezoning site. And the staff and planning board recommendation would be for approval based upon the proximity of existing R A zoning and also the consistency of the rezoning request with the comprehensive plan. With that, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Cotton for the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. At this time, I will now open the public hearing. First, we will hear from the applicant. If anyone is here representing the applicant? Okay. No one has signed up for this public hearing. I will make one call to the audience. If anyone would like to speak on rezoning case, P R E Z, Tac 2018, Tac 00002. Seeing no one approaching the podium, I will close the public hearing, and the item is available for Commissioner discussion.
Mr. Warren, did anyone, I noticed in the material that no one showed up before against it at the planning board meeting. Is that the case? I know we send out letters when we, when somebody requests rezoning. So, planning board voted unanimously to approve it, and staff recommend it, recommended it. Any of the board members have any questions for Mr. Warren?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I believe you are up next again, Mr. Warren.
Yes, sir, we have another rezoning petition for your consideration. Mr. Steven Fisante has submitted a petition to rezone parcel 765-14.47 from residential eight, R 8M, to highway business, and the parcel consists of approximately 0.46 acres. This parcel is also served by unwasse water, and it also has onsite septic, but chloro-sauer is available to the site. Turkey Creek Volunteer Fire Department would provide fire service, and the two closest streets providing access would be NC Highway 172, which has an average annual daily traffic count of 20,000 vehicles per day and a carrying capacity of 30,000, and NC Highway 210, which has an average annual daily traffic count of 18,000 vehicles per day and a capacity of 30,000. A little bit hard to see with all the different colors. There's a large assortment of zoning along NC Highway 172, but as we come through Four Corners on Highway 172 going to the back gate, on the south side of 172 is the site itself. The site right now is bordered on the one side by the R 8M, but then directly adjacent to the west, the south, and then across NC Highway 172 to the north by highway business. As you can see, the surrounding zoning, surrounding land uses primarily consist of a mixture of some single-family residential and the transition of commercial uses along 172 as you transition away from the Four Corners intersection. In comparing the two districts, the current R 8M zoning district is primarily intended for single-family residential and manufactured homes with some small-scale supporting uses. The requested highway business is our largest or most comprehensive commercial zoning district, and really encompasses about all retail and office-type uses and also neighborhood supporting uses. This area falls within a community growth activity center within the comprehensive plan future land use map, and also a village center recommendation within the Sneed's Ferry Community Plan. And the highway business zoning district is a compatible use or compatible zoning district within both of those adopted plans. Through this, looking at the consistency with comprehensive plan or adopted plans, the request is consistent with both the comprehensive plan and the Sneed's Ferry Community Plan, and because of the proximity to the site for, or of existing highway business zoning, it is considered a reasonable request. And for those reasons, both the staff and the planning board have made a recommendation for approval of this rezoning request. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Cotton for the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. At this time, I will open the public hearing, and first we will offer the applicant to step forward and make an applicant statement.
Good evening, board members. Just want to recommend, I would love the opportunity to put our business into Sneed's Ferry to help develop that area. We currently own one snowball shop here in Jacksonville, right in the heart of Jacksonville and the city. It's been very successful, and we've been able to bring great fun and, great fun and a great place for family and friends and young children to come to and hang out and at a very reasonable price. And my wife, my wife and myself has also helped out the community. We do multiple fundraisers. We give back to local organizations as much as possible, and we also help out all the schools, and we also would love to help out all the Marines, Air Force, Navy, all the military personnel, and continue to give to them and provide more places at an affordable price for them and their family to come to. I just retired from the Army last year, don't hold it against me, and like I said, we're very, very excited to hopefully bring our business to the Sneed's Ferry area.
Sir, if you would mind state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Steven Fisanti, and the address, would you like the shop address or my personal?
Whichever one.
Okay, the shop address that we would love to put the shop at is going to be 2472 Highway 132, Sneed's Ferry, North Carolina, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Okay. No one has signed up for this public hearing. I will make one call to the audience. If anyone would like to approach the podium speaking on rezoning case, P R E Z, Tac 2018, Tac 00003. Seeing no one approach the podium, I will close the public hearing, and the item is available for Commissioner discussion and- Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, my grandkids love the snowballs.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, say aye. Thank you. Mr. Warren, I believe you've got another item here.
I heard of my keep this evening. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your consideration. We have one final rezoning request, and this petition was submitted by Mr. Steven and Ms. Florinda Britton for parcel ID 1313-115, and the request is to rezone property from residential 20 to residential 8M, and the property consists of approximately 3.90 acres. This parcel is also served by an unwasse six-inch water line, and there is no sewer currently available to the site. The Swansboro Fire Department would provide fire service to the site, and the two closest streets providing access are Queen's Road, which averages 900 vehicle trips per day and has a carrying capacity of 12,000 vehicle trips per day, and NC 24, which averages 24,000 vehicle trips per day and has a carrying capacity of 35,000. As we look at the site, this is a little bit unique, not only with the shape of the parcel, but also, as you can see, on the southern side of the parcel, a portion of it is already zoned R 8M. The majority and the most usable portion is zoned R 20, and so it's a little bit different than what our typical request would look like. The parcel is currently vacant. There is a special use permit that was issued for this parcel, which has a sunset of August of 2018 for a single RV. Other than that, the site is currently vacant and unused at this time. In looking at the district comparison, here again, the residential 20, minimum lot size 2,000 square feet and two dwelling units per acre, primarily intended for single-family residential and low-scale supporting uses. And the R 8Ms, 8,000 square foot minimum lot size and up to eight dwelling units per acre. One of the major differences between the two is that the R 8M also allows manufactured homes, whereas the R 20 does not. As we look at the comprehensive plan, this area also falls within a medium-density residential category in the future land use map, and both the existing R 20 and the proposed or recommended R 8M are both corresponding zoning districts for the medium-density residential Because of that, both the existing zoning and the requested zoning are consistent with the comprehensive plan, and because of the presence of the R 8M and the R 20 adjacent to the rezoning site, both are considered reasonable and in the public interest. And for these reasons, both the staff and the planning board have recommended approval of the rezoning request. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Cotton for the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. At this time, I will open the public hearing for rezoning case, P R E Z, Tac 2018, Tac First call on the applicant who has signed up. It is Steve and Linda Britton of 204 Queen's Road, Hubert. Ms. Britton.
Good evening, Board. I'm Steven Britton, and my wife Florinda Britton. We're here, and we live at 204 Queen's Road. What it was is when we bought our property, we combined it, our two properties. One is zoned at R M, the other one is R 20, which is the bigger property. It also has a septic system on it. We have water going to it. I also have a special permit to live there in my camper while we're waiting for our home. And what we're doing is because of our two zonings, for me to get permits, the bigger part of my property requires me to change the zoning to R M eight, so I can put my manufactured home in, which is a double-wide home for me and my wife to live in. And we've been working on this since September, so, you know, as far as going through getting qualified for homes and things like this, we finally qualified for a home for a double-wide, and I found out from my permits I have required to have the zoning changed, so both of my properties are combined it, because I went to the lawyer and everything and had the property all combined, combined it into one address, because it used to be two separate addresses, which is now it's legally done as one, as far as with my taxes and everything. Thank you, Board.
No one else has signed up for the public hearing. I will make one call to the audience. If anyone would like to speak on rezoning case, P R E Z, Tac 2018, Tac 0004. Seeing no one approaching the podium, I will now close the public hearing, and the item is available for Commissioner discussion. Ben, I have a question. That's an awful long time for that to all take place, all those permitting and all. Is that normal? It's almost a year.
No, sir, it, for the actual permitting process, it's much shorter than that. It really depends on the applicant and the timeline for when they produce documents and make requests. So his individual case had several different steps in that he wanted to temporarily reside on the property once he got a special use permit to allow the RV for a period of time to allow that to happen. And then I think he had some, some items on his side that he was working through before making the application for the manufactured home. If you had the zoning in place, you had things, utilities, things lined up, typically it would take, our plan of view is, you know, we issue over-the-counter permits, typically, I would say probably two weeks at the very most, to be able to come in and get a setup permit and to, to be ready to move forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, say aye. Thank you. The next item is general items, final offer on real property. Ms. Laura Jones.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair and Commissioners. On April 16th, the Board accepted an offer from a citizen to purchase a parcel of land, the parcel 050815, and it's located off Old Polkston Road in the Stumps downtownship. It's approximately 2.85 acres of a size, and it's a long, narrow strip of land, and the offer was in the amount of $500, which exceeded the current tax value. As required by statute, a public notice was advertised in the Daily News, and at that point, we allowed 10 more days for up to accept upset offers. However, we did not receive any upset offers during that time. Therefore, the final offer of $500 was being brought back to you for consideration, and if the Board does approve the offer, the property will be sold as is, and a deed will be prepared transferring the property, and then we'll remove it from the county's asset pile. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the final offer in the amount of $500 for parcel 050815, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, say aye.
Thank you.
You up again?
Yes, sir. The next two items on the agenda are new offers, and we received an offer from a citizen in the amount of $20,000 to purchase land located at 856 Lake Willow Way, which is located in the Summer House subdivision of Stumps downtownship. It's referred to as parcel 069126, and it's about a quarter of an acre, 0.23 of an acre in size. And the statutes allow the county to sell property that no longer serves a public purpose and if it's uneconomical or inefficient. And the county's standard practice has been to sell the property using the negotiated offer advertisement and the upset bid process like we did on the previous one. The process allows for other interested parties to submit upset bids within 10 days after it's been advertised, and then the final offer will be brought back to you for final consideration after that time. It's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners declare the property a surplus, consider the initial offer of $20,000, and if approved, authorize the purchasing director to conduct the sale using the negotiated offer advertisement and upset bid process. And again, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Land offer to purchase again.
And this offer was in the amount of $30,000, and it's also located in the Summer House subdivision. The address is 522 Moss Lake Lane. It's referred to as parcel 609587, and it's 0.20 of an acre in size. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners declare the property a surplus, consider the initial offer of $30,000, and if approved, authorize the purchasing director to conduct the sale using negotiated offer advertisement and upset bid process.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Are these the properties that we're having to pay owner association fees on?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Both of them were that way?
Yes, sir.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Yeah, we've had these lots for, probably since 2009, but we-
We've had them quite some time, I can tell you in just one second. We acquired them in 2008. Yes, sir, you're right.
It'll be good to get rid of them.
Yes.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye, say aye. Engagement letter, Mr. David McColl. Who are we getting engaged to?
Good evening, Board of Commissioners. The engagement letter you have before you is for, to perform testing of eligibility for federal programs for the state for fiscal years 630, 2018. It's a state requirement for all counties to have this test work done. The program that's been selected by the state is the Medicaid program, and this is to the benefit of the state. We're required to have the test work done, but again, it's to the benefit of the state. The fee that we are looking to pay is $10,500, and it's with the accounting firm Elliott Davis. And with that said, I respectfully request that you consider approval of the engagement letter with Elliott Davis and authorize the chairman to sign the engagement letter on behalf of the county, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions on, on this engagement letter.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye, say aye. Section E, again, Mr. McColl.
Okay. The next item we have before you is the audit contract. Again, it's with the accounting firm of Elliott Davis. We went, we went out and did an R F P for our services, for audit, to have the audit provided to us for 630, 2018 financial statements. We selected the firm Elliott Davis. Just to give you a little bit of a background on the firm, they're, they're going to be new to us. It's going to be the first year they'll be doing the audit. They were formed in, in 1920. They primarily engage in governmental auditing and services provided to governmental entities in North Carolina and also in South Carolina. They supervise, they supervise over 30,000 hours of services that are provided to governmental entities on a yearly basis, so they come with a wealth of experience of governmental auditing background. The governmental practice constitutes mainly of governmental auditing and consulting that takes up the majority of their time and, and their resources. The audit fee, or the audit contract is for $50,000, and with that said, I respectfully request that you consider approval of the contract with Elliott Davis for the fiscal year 2018 audit and authorize the chairman to sign the contract on behalf of the county. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you have concerning- And with that said, I respectfully request that you consider approval of the contract with Elliott Davis for the fiscal year 2018 audit and authorize the chairman to sign the contract on behalf of the county. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you have concerning this contract.
A motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
David, one of.
Go ahead.
One of the things, I've never had this happen before, but I got an email over the weekend recommending this company, highly recommended this company to do this work for us. I've never had that happen before. I got an email over the weekend.
Well, that's nice to know. And the managing partner is here today. It's Tom McNish. So he'll be the one that will be managing the audit that's coming here. So that's nice, that's nice to hear then. That's good.
I was going to say the same thing. I received an email also and I had two or three big businesses that called me and said they've used this firm and highly recommend them, but I'm sorry to.
That's all right. Yeah, I was just going to ask, did we get more than one bid for the work?
We actually received five and they ranged anywhere from around $50,000. One was, I won't say the name, but it was $130,000. So I'm sure they're a fine firm, but a little bit, a little pricey for, I think, just probably about all the government agencies in the state, maybe not Mecklenburg County. But so, yeah, we had five bids. So we had, which, I'll be honest with you, it's getting tougher and tougher to find governmental auditors because the regulations are getting more and more and it's putting more and more time on to the auditors and on to the staff of finance and the county in general. So we were pleased to get five bids. You're seeing a lot of smaller counties having trouble getting maybe one or two bids now. But, you know, we're a decent sized county that's just pretty organized. So, you know, we were able to get five bids.
Any further?
No.
All in favor of a motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
As have it. Thank you. Section F is mass notification interlocal agreement with town. Lynn?
Yes, Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners. In July 2017, Onslow County changed its vendors for emergency mass notification system to code RED. Code RED is powered by Onsolve, an automated phone dialing tool that alerts residents, response groups, disaster recovery planners, and other selected contacts during emergencies. And for all other governmental activities. One of the advantages in switching to code RED was the ability to share this system with the other entities and government agencies. The town of Holly Ridge has agreed to the terms of the interlocal agreement and policy of use for code RED, and the town has signed the interlocal agreement and has presented the agreement back to the county. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider approval of the interlocal agreement for the use of code RED for the town of Holly Ridge and authorize the chairman of the board to sign on behalf of the county. And I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Motion.
I make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, this is an excellent opportunity for us to provide a service to one of our smaller municipalities. And I appreciate the opportunity to partner with them and to do something for them that's at no, really no cost to us, extra cost to us, and no cost to them. So thank you very much.
Right. Even, we actually saved money, over $20,000 a year when we went to this product and we were able to offer it to all the municipalities free.
All in favor of a motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, favorite. Thank you, sir. Contract for renovation of the facility-based crisis center, Ms. Sherri Slater, our Assistant County Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm going to start with item G, if that's all right with you, sir. The Dorothea Dix Hospital Property Fund Grant. The county was successful in receiving a grant from the Dorothea Dix Fund for up to $2 million to renovate the existing facility into a 16-bed crisis, facility-based crisis center. We would, the grant has been reviewed by the county attorney and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about that. But we would respectfully request that the Board accept the grant and authorize the chairman to sign.
Motion.
That's a big motion.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor of a motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Let me say something about this. Of course, you know it's near and dear to my heart and to the rest of the board members, but, you know, this is results oriented. This is the work, the hard work of the county employees in your action with Senator Harry Brown up in Raleigh, working together to get this money. And if I understand, you know, we were granted $2 million for this grant and I think, and you'll probably talk about it here, the next one, that the people that are going to be responsible for this renovation came in pretty low, which even saved us even more significant money. So I'm very proud of this. I know the board members are very proud of this because this took a lot of work from everybody to get this, to this particular stage and that we're going to have this building up and running, this facility, this type of service in this county, probably within the next five to six months. And to me, that's significant. And I applaud the efforts of you and the rest of the people for getting this done. Bravo.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, now, section H.
Thank you, sir. We do have before you a contract for renovation of the facility-based crisis center. In September of 2017, this Board of Commissioners approved the crisis center renovation project ordinance. With assistance from the grant funding that we've just discussed, the county will be able to adequately renovate that property. The facility is owned by the county and is located at 215 Memorial Drive. Again, this would renovate a 16-bed facility-based crisis center. Bids were solicited in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 143-129. The county did receive four bids. The lowest responsible responsive bidder is Daniels &amp; Daniels. Out of Goldsboro, North Carolina. Attached, you'll find the contract in the amount of $1,398,000 to complete the renovation project. This contract has also been reviewed by the county attorney and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Sherri, I have one. I know that we talked about this a lot, but the lowest responsible, could you explain that to the public?
Yes, sir. In our bid process, we have things such as references. We have them submit jobs of similar size and scope that they've completed so that we can make sure that they understand the project that's asked of them, they understand the scope of the work that's being asked, they have managed a project of a similar budget as well as a square footage size. We're able to follow up on that and make sure, sort of like you would if you were interviewing for a job. We check their references. We check to make sure that they have the ability and the skills to do what we're asking of them.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a question as well. There are several allowances here, landscaping, electrical improvement. Then there's one that says contingency, 120,000. Is that usually included in contracts? Is that something that, something that is always included in there?
Yes, Commissioner. We do always include contingency. In this case in particular, we were careful to make sure that we included sufficient contingency as it's not just building inspectors that have to come in and approve this. We also have to have the facility approved by the Division of Health Service Regulations because of the type of facility it is. So there will be things, or there potentially will be things that DHSR will come back and ask to have done in order for it to meet the licensing requirements for the type of facility it is. So we want to make sure that we're covered on that in terms of any contingencies.
Okay. And a related question with that is, who determines if that's an allowable contingency on the part of the company?
For the county, I'm the project lead. So between myself and the architects that are reviewing all the plans, that would be a decision that we would make on your behalf. The architects that have been involved on this project is Smith Senate Architecture and they started at the very beginning of the discussion. We had the state come down, the Division of Health Service Regulation come down and walk through the property with us, make a list of things that they thought needed to be done. As soon as the design phase was complete, we submitted the design drawings back to them and got their comments again. And when the construction drawings were done, they were submitted again. And in fact, today, I receive their feedback from the construction drawings. So our architects have done a tremendous job making sure that we have done as much of that groundwork beforehand as is possible.
So if all our Ts are crossed and As dotted, we may not need to spend this 120,000? Is that what I'm hearing?
One would hope, sir.
Okay.
Let me say something about that. When you talked about the architect involved in the inspection and the construction of this, you know, I was privy, I was there when a couple of them came down. And of course, they did a lot better inspection than I did when I first saw the building. But they came down and they were extremely thorough and I think they came to our task force meeting as well on a couple of occasions. And this is a process that's very tedious. This isn't, you know, hey, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. There are specific guidelines that they have to follow to ensure that all the construction codes are met, all the regulations are met, et cetera. And you guys really worked hard to get this up and running. And the fact that we have, we do have a contingency allotment within this contract, which is good, like you said, to cover miscellaneous items that may pop up. And yet, this company is very reputable and they came in at 1.3, which is 600,000, or almost 700,000 away from the target fund of 2 million that we received from this grant. I think that's significant. That means that we can utilize that money for other things in terms of a capital project within that building. And it's just a tremendous effort all around. I just can't applaud you guys enough for what you've done and what the architectures have done because this thing is going to be up and running soon.
Thank you, sir. In addition to the contract for construction, other things that the funds will be spent on would be furniture for the facility, the equipment it takes to get it up and running. The county's plan and your plan and the task force plan is to have the building as turnkey ready as we possibly can when the provider is selected.
Do we actually have the $2 million and then we front the bill and then we just submit the reimbursement forms or do we actually, do we actually have the $2 million in our finance budget?
It's a reimbursement grant, sir. So we'll pay out the money and submit the invoices.
We have to front the money and this is for people watching. We have to front the money, the 1.3 million, and then we get reimbursed with, out of the $2 million pot.
In a sense, yes, sir. However, with a construction contract of this nature, we receive pay applications throughout the process based on the amount of work that's been completed. So as we receive a pay application for, say, one tenth of the work, we would then be able to submit that invoice to the state for reimbursement. So we won't have to spend the entire amount and wait for reimbursement. We'll be able to receive reimbursements on a regular basis throughout the construction project.
Now, is there a sunset on the two, the remaining amount of the 2 million? Like Commissioner Knapp said, we can use that money, but if something comes up down the road that we need to do as far as renovating or getting the facility in line, how long do we have to use that $2 million or what's left of the $2 million after the contract?
I don't know the exact date, sir, that's on the contract. I would have to look at that. It is specific, though, to the items that we put in the grant paperwork. So it's very specific to the renovation project and the supplies and materials needed to get the facility open. At that point, once the facility is up and running, it would not be under our control and under the grant specs anymore.
So if we see something that we need, we know that we're going to have to do to make sure that that facility is open and it's going to be more than that, we go out on bids for the rest or we just, is that part of what we, if it's under a certain amount, we still get reimbursed with that funding from the 2 million?
If it was required to get the facility operational and we still had funds left within the 2 million, we would submit a budget revision to the state and request approval to have that new item added. It's typically the way that we would do a grant, in addition to a grant project.
Sure, I just got one more question. And we've discussed this during our task force meeting. I just can't recall what we discussed in this particular situation, but, you know, we kind of got a bonus deal with this facility. We already had our facility there. We basically had the show and we're going in and renovating it to meet our qualifications. Now, we got lucky and fortunate that we gained the front part of that facility as well due to some situations. Will that money, and again, I can't remember if I asked you before, will that, can that money, leftover money that we have or what is budgeted, can we use that for the front part of the facility as well or no?
So part of the project, sir, that was submitted for the grant includes creating space in the front building to support the operations of the facility-based crisis center. For instance, the center itself is not, could use a bit more space and we don't have it. So one of the ways that we created space is we removed the laundry and we placed that in the front building. So laundry for the facility would actually be done in the adjacent building. Additionally, you need storage. When you have folks who come in, they come in with things that need to be stored until they leave. And so we've created the storage space in the front building. So the things that we will do to the front building are a part of the grant package.
Awesome.
Yes, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second.
Yeah, I have a comment, though. I don't think, I don't think a 10% contingency is excessive on a project like this, so I think that's pretty prudent, actually. And I don't think we can remind the public too many times that this project is being funded by money that we were spending already on mental health, on health issues in Onslow County. And it's not increasing our budget by, at all, not one dime. And it's because of partnerships with our surrounding counties and with our local municipalities and with the state and this grant that we're able to do this, so. I want to reiterate what he just said real quick because you just touched on something. For people out there in G 10, people out there that are here in the audience and elsewhere, one of the first things that people said, you know, that we're spending money on this, but no, the money was already allocated. The money was already allocated for mental health towards Trillium. But what we did as commissioners, we turned it around and dedicated that money to be spent specifically for this. The money was already expended. Okay? Does everybody understand that? It was already there, it's already processed. We were spending that money anyway, but we just decided that this is more of a necessity and priority and we're able to convince the parties involved to use this money specifically for this facility in Onslow County. Before, our funds were being used and they were being dispersed outside of our county as well. And I don't think we thought that was right. And so I think we, we had, we performed a big coup here and, you know, now our money is being spent within Onslow County to do what we set out to do. So again, I applaud your efforts. Well done.
Thank you.
Motion and a second. All in favor of a motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As have it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chris White from Albert Ellis Airport, our director. Thank you, sir, for coming.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman and Commissioners. The first project we have for you tonight is the airfield, or excuse me, the airport electrical improvements project. On June 19th, 2017, the Board of Commissioners approved a project ordinance for the airport's 2017 electrical improvements in the amount of $1,555,556. The North Carolina Department of Transportation awarded Onslow County a grant in the amount of 1.4 million. The remainder of the project was to be funded by passenger facility charges. The project was bid on March 1st and rebid on March 14th when four bids were received. COBO Utility Construction Corporation was the lowest responsive responsible bidder and their bid was in the amount of $2,037,645. The bids exceeded the budget and last week, the North Carolina Department of Transportation agreed to increase the grant by $615,000. An amended project ordinance adjusts the project costs and revenues has been prepared for you. RSNH also submitted a proposal for construction administration and resident inspection services in the amount of $99,990. This proposal also passed a required independent fee review. The specific action requested is the airport respectfully requests that the Board of Commissioners accept the grant modification from the NCDOT, approve the associated project ordinance amendment, award the construction contract to COBO Utility Construction Corporation, and execute RSNH Work Authorization Number 7 for the CARI services and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the county.
Motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
When's our tower going to be done?
Later this year.
Later this year. I had to ask that.
I just want to make a comment and observation. Airport is totally funded by grants and by passenger fees and pretty much enterprise fund and I think you're on that board. So Commissioner Buchanan sits on the airport advisory board and there's no county dollars spent out there. And we've got absolutely fantastic crown jewel. We just need a better road to get there, but that's not our responsibility. And I've seen in the paper where we had some other amenities that was added to the airport between now and Labor Day. So I hope people go out and see the facility. between now and Labor Day, so I hope people go out and see the facility.
He's talking about the North Carolina Aquarium with all the creatures that they have out at our airport.
Come see the dinosaurs, yes. We're very proud of the efforts that have been out there.
Any further discussion or comment? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I think the next one is yours also, Mr. White.
Yes, sir. The next project is about economic development. The South General Aviation Development Phase 1 Project. This project will design and construct a southern expansion of the general aviation apron sites and create sites for hangars, a connector taxi lane, associated roadways and utilities. Existing hangars have all reached capacity and there is significant interest in additional hangar space. The cost of the project will be funded by the North Carolina Department of Transportation in the amount of $1,729,416 with the balance to be funded by passenger facility charges. The NCDOT grant is authorized by legislation that was passed last year, which awarded funds to commercial service airports for the purpose of funding improvements. The Albert Ellis Airport was awarded $1,729,416 and has been approved for the South GA Development Phase 1 Project. RSNH, the county's engineer, has proposed to design and provide bidding services for the project in the amount of $217,200. The specific action requested is the airport respectfully requests that the Board of Commissioners accept the grant from the NCDOT, approve the associated project ordinance, and execute RSNH's Work Authorization Number 4 for the design and bidding services and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion?
Does this indicate that we have customers waiting on this right now, the interest that is expressed here?
We have a waiting list that currently contains 16 people that would like to move their aircraft either into hangars from the ramp or to this airport from another airport. These hangars also have a tendency to create jobs. So by having the site, that gives us the opportunity to build hangars and also to work on public-private partnerships for others to build hangars.
Chris, this is awesome. I know people who want hangar space and it's my understanding that any revenue generated by lease of the hangar space comes into the enterprise fund?
Yes. You know, we tend to, the FAA prohibits us from selling the land, so we do long-term leases that if a public or a private entity were to construct a hangar on the airport, it gives them sufficient time to amortize their investment on the property. They do pay a land lease. And then any facilities that are built on the airport at the termination of the lease revert to ownership of the county at the end of those. So any revenue generated from those does get deposited in the enterprise fund, but any taxes, any taxable assets.
Any airplanes that come in here from out of county, they're then taxed in Onslow County, correct?
Yes.
That's awesome.
This is very similar to the motor vehicle registration. If it's registered here, you pay property, personal property taxes here on that craft.
That is correct. And one thing to remember is if you've got a jet located here, for example, that one jet can generate as much in property taxes as 10 or up to 50 homes. And they also do not require taxpayer-funded services.
Well, it's the same thing because we have the King Airs, there's two or three King Airs are trying to come in here and they're twin props and they're worth about $2,000,000, $2.5 million, I guess, a piece, whatever they are.
We're talking to people right now with about $9 million worth of aircraft looking to locate those.
Hey, I got a question about the hangar space. Do we have any bigger industries looking at hangar space? Bigger type airlines or things of that nature or, you know, I'm thinking FedEx, people like that. Do we have anybody looking at those or requesting?
We receive solicitations on a routine basis for people looking for existing hangars. We're looking to relocate their businesses to airports that have those hangars. We do not currently have any large enough available hangars. And that is something that we're trying to do with this, is create the sites where hangars can be built and then work with people to build the hangars.
And the one thing, the tower is going to be a big help to us, the control tower versus this, you know, UPS aircraft and we get into all the bigger aircraft that come in, they don't stay here, they just come in and dump their supplies out and then they go back out. But it'd be nice if we can get some of those.
The tower's already been cited by several companies that are looking at the airport for relocation as one of the reasons that they are looking at the airport.
How long will it take to get, how long will it take to build these hangars? Is this a year-long project about?
It typically takes between environmental approval, site development, design, and construction, at least a year or close to it.
I've been talking to pilots and we've had one opportunity for a plane that was $4 million that we lost property tax on because they had to house it somewhere else. They wanted it here, but we didn't have space. For the public, tell the board and the general public that's listening tonight how long we've had those 15 or 14 or 15 people waiting on the waiting list for a hangar that just wants to be here.
Well, that number goes up and down. A new hangar was opened in the last year and about six aircraft moved into that hangar. And then more people have come looking for more hangar space since then. So that number constantly fluctuates up and down based on demand. And as the economy improves, that number tends to grow. And so we're going to get into the hangar building business sometime later this year, I suspect.
Well, plus, we've done a whole lot with general aviation, too. I mean, new building, new facility. I mean, it was not even, people didn't want to come here because of the services they couldn't get and now the services are there with general aviation.
That's correct. We have a flight school now. We have a maintenance operation available to our pilots here. So we're starting to attract even more, more businesses. The airport generates an economic impact of $237 million a year and facilitates or serves 370 jobs. We hope that number will continue to increase over time.
Chris, we thank you, you and your staff.
You're welcome.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. White. Childcare subsidy, Ms. Heidi Bauer.
Department of, oh, good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners, and Mr. Cotton. The Department of Social Services is responsible for providing childcare subsidy to citizens of Onslow County. The childcare subsidy program is funded through a combination of state and federal dollars, subsidizes the quality childcare for working families. In 2014, Onslow County contracted with the Onslow County Partnership for Children for provision of the childcare subsidy program, allowing families to access services at their first point of contact. This collaboration has been beneficial to the citizens and it is the desire of the Onslow County Department of Social Services to continue the contract with the Onslow County Partnership for Children to provide the service. In 2017, NCFAST began issuing the subsidy payments directly to the childcare providers. The state grant cycle for this is June 1st, 2018, through May 31st, 2019. The contract with the Onslow County Partnership for Children is for an amount not to exceed This is equal to the amount of state and federal dollars allocated to Onslow County for the childcare subsidy program. There are no county dollars allocated for this contract. I'll be available to answer any questions that you may have and respectfully request that the Board of Commissioners consider and approve the childcare subsidy contract and authorize the chairman to sign the associated documents.
Motion.
No move.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Here we got item seven, consent agenda. We moved the item from the consent agenda to item number seven. I'm not sure, are you?
David McColl, I think.
Okay. Mr. McColl, I guess, would be handling this.
Good evening, Board. The item you have before you is authorized signatures on checks and drafts. The county is updating necessary bank documentation. North Carolina's general statute 159-25B states, "Except as otherwise provided by law, all checks or drafts on an official depository shall be signed by the finance officer or properly designated deputy finance officer and countersigned by another official of the local government or authority designated for this purpose by the governing body. If the board makes no other designation, the chairman of the board or chief executive officer of the local government or public authority shall countersign these checks and drafts. The governing body of a unit or authority may waive the requirements of this subsection if the board determines that the internal control procedures of the unit or authority will be satisfactory in the absence of dual signatures." It has been the practice of Onslow County for the signature on, for the signatures on the check to be that of the finance officer and the county manager, so we always have two signatures on our checks. Additionally, according to NCGS 159-28, or point one, the governing board of a local government of public authority may provide, may provide by appropriate resolution or ordinance for the use of fascin meal, signature machines, signature stamps, or similar devices in signing checks and drafts and in signing pre-audit certificate on contracts or purchase orders the board shall charge, should charge the finance officer or some other bonded officer or employee with. With that said, I respectfully request that approval of Resolution 18-004, which specifies the authorized signatures for checks and drafts of the county and authorizes the use of fascin meal signatures, authorizes the chairman and/or clerk to execute any associated bank documents affecting the implementation of Resolution 18-004. With that said, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you have on this matter.
Brett, can you give us some guidance on this?
Right. So essentially what happens, and it's always been the practice, required by law, they have to have two signatures. And this gives that signatory authority to, it's either going to be the county manager and the deputy county manager or the finance director and the assistant finance director, they both have to sign. While, one of the things we saw today is the signature cards had to be updated as well, and that's why we asked that to be removed from the consent agenda so that we could take care of the signature cards at the same time.
Okay. Any motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any questions for Mr. McColl or county attorney? You satisfied that's what we need to do, counsel?
Yes, sir. From an efficiency standpoint, rather than bringing in every check before this board, I think you guys would much rather than do this.
Never know what you're signing unless you ask. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. McColl. We had an item eight now, public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is the second public comment period. In accordance with the board's adopted rules and procedures, the commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the commissioner's comment period on the agenda. Comments may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. During the second public comment period, citizens can address the board for up to five minutes each. The first person who has signed up is Pat Walker of 140 Denise Drive, Jacksonville.
Good evening, Commissioners. First of all, I want to thank you for the support you have been giving these past few years to the Lejeune Memorial Gardens. Since the beginning, we've tried to keep you all well informed of the plants and the growth of the gardens. Today is no different. We are at last ready to begin fundraising for the visitor center in the garden. This is a much-needed asset as people are always looking for a restroom. As you can see, I've given you architects' drawings. They're simple but ample for what is needed. Men's and ladies' rooms, storage, which means some of the things for the garden can come out of my house and go there. And also, we have room for display cases to show off some of the artifacts that have been left at the different memorials. And those are accumulating fast. We have, everything you can think of has been left out there. As you walk up to the building, the front of it is glass and as you walk in, the back of the building is glass, which means that as you look out, you're going to be able to see the memorials whichever way you look. This restroom facility visitor center will be just to the right, as you're looking at the gardens, from the Vietnam Memorial sidewalk. The sidewalk kind of curves and we're going to put it back in there amongst the trees. It won't be very, it won't be an eyesore. It'll be just nestled in the bushes and whatnot that we intend to develop the site around There were other choices that gave us the ability to have two golf carts available for the handicap. We feel these are needed because there are people who want to see all the memorials and can't walk the distance. You figure it's a long hike from the Monfort Point Memorial to what hopefully will be the museum one day. The elderly can't make that walk, so we're going to provide two golf carts to be out there. The cost of the project is $375,000. The Monfort Point Memorial Association has joined with us in this concept and their chapters across the United States are fundraising to help us expedite this as quickly as possible. As you know, it's one of the biggest attractions in Onslow County and we hope that you also will financially support us. The inside of the building, we plan on having a large plaque. It was brought up when we did the memorial that who were the big donors, who were the small donors? Well, this time, we're going to have it. And we will have platinum, diamond, and gold for the different levels of contributions. If there's any questions on the drawings, they're done by the Smith Senate Architects out of Raleigh. And if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the second person who has signed up is Lanny Bowman of, did I get that right? No?
Hi, I'm Lonnie Boyerman at 103 Winthrop Way in Jacksonville. I'm here on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Children's Museum and I want to thank you for this opportunity. Some months ago, you invited us to come and give you an update periodically and so that's why we're here tonight. First of all, I'd like to ask, how many of you have ever visited a children's museum? One of you? Well, a children's museum, you know what it is, but the others may not be familiar. Normally, when we go to a museum, we just look at things. Well, a children's museum is totally different. You play, you touch, you create, you discover. Everything is touchable. It's not a quiet place. It's an exciting place to be. Grown-ups love it just as much as children do. People ask us what our name is, why we have Zingzum. We decided to have a contest some years ago and the winners came up with this name. It stands for Amazing Museum, Zingzum. We thought it would be much more catchy than something rather boring. Well, our past expectations for opening were last fall, then December, then January, then March. And because of lots of renovations and things, and you know how things get delayed, that expectations, those expectations were not met. Currently, the sprinkler and alarm systems are almost finished. The interior renovations, which included new doors with panic bars, are installed. We have arranged to have a drywall added and separating a room in order to create a sensory room. And we have internet and security cameras being installed as we speak. On the exterior, if you've driven by at 625 New Bridge Street, you've seen that we have new awnings up. You've seen that the arches have been painted. We also have some of our little logo figures ready to be put up once we get our certificate of occupancy. If you've peeked in the windows, you've seen boxes that are not opened yet because of all the mess. Our play spaces- Our play spaces, we, we have equipment to cover the animal care area, the art area, construction with big blocks. If you were at the jamboree yesterday, or Saturday, you would have seen some of those big blocks where the children can create structures. We have all kinds of materials that they can build with. We'll have a dramatic play center with literacy as well, and some of us go to gyms for exercise. Well, we have small miniature gyms, gym sets for the children, you know, to, to walk, to build their strength. We have a finance area, we have grocery, and attention to our military. We have a pizzeria, not, not for real eating, of course. Science area, and I mentioned the sensory room already. Many children, we find more and more have autism, and when they are with a bunch of children and exciting things, they can get deregulated. So having this sensory room with the things for them will help them to regulate themselves before they can come back into the larger environment. We also have a special toddler area for children under three, and artists from the Council of Arts will be helping us create murals and other decorative wall things. What our need now is the certificate of occupancy, and of course, monetary donations. We have two fundraisers planned. One is a reverse raffle in September, and the other, a turkey trot run right before Thanksgiving. Our current expectation to open is late July or August, and our board is, will be supervising volunteer workers. If you have any questions or comments, we would appreciate them.
We reserve comments till after the commissioner comments section.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Anyone else signed up?
Mr. Chairman, no one else has signed up.
Okay. Managers' comments?
I do not have any this evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners.
All right. Commissioner's comment, Commissioner Bennett.
All right, I'm going to go first, huh? It's been a lot going on in the last couple of weeks, so I have a, have a lot to say tonight. Yeah, I heard the groans. I'll try to be quick, but it's kind of, it's kind of funny that, it's kind of funny that the Snowball and the Zingzum are here tonight, because last week, I kicked off my 2018 youth activities survey, and we hear a lot from up here that, that kids don't have anything to do in Onslow County, and I think that's wrong. I think there are things for kids to do in Onslow County, so I'm looking for the next few weeks for low-cost and new things for kids to do in Onslow County. We're going to produce a video and, and a report that we can show people that there are things to do in Onslow County. So if you know of anything that you'd like included in my report and video, then I'd love for you to contact me. You can email me or call me, however you want to contact me. I also want to congratulate the Naval Medical Center at Camp Lejeune, Captain Hancock, on their 75th anniversary. On May the 1st, I attended the Naval Medical Center's anniversary celebration. The guest speaker was Vice Admiral Michael Cohen, M.D., retired. He reminded the audience of the rich history of the naval hospital and its many accomplishments in the last 75 years. It's a really nice ceremony. On May 3rd was the National Day of Prayer, and it was called a prayer for unity in America. Local citizens organized a really nice service at the Beirut Memorial at noon on May the 3rd, and I was honored to be among the many pastors and faith leaders who were in attendance for that, that service. The next day, on May the 4th, I went to Jacksonville High School production of Little Mermaid, and I would say if any of you have not been to one of the, I've been to White Oaks production this year and Jacksonville High School. If you haven't been to any of their theater productions, you're missing out on something that's really fun locally to do. The Onslow Pregnancy Resource Center held their annual Walk for Life on Saturday. It had over 200 runners and walkers that participated. They raised over $20,000 to provide support for women with crisis pregnancies. It's a really good cause, and I would also like to thank Apostle Audrey Hostly for inviting me to speak at her Awakening Reality Weekend Retreat. It was a very uplifting retreat for me. And finally, today, we celebrated the life of Mrs. Barbara Woodward. Some of you may know her. She was the widow of former Sheriff Billy Woodward, Sr. She was a wonderful Christian lady and a member of Blue Creek Baptist Church for many years. Her wit and wisdom will be sorely missed. Hope you all have a good night, be careful.
You actually wrote that down?
I did.
Didn't want to miss anything.
That it?
That's it.
Commissioner Price?
Well, when we were last here together, in, in the middle of April, I had mentioned a mock trial that I was able to be involved in at Southwest High School. That continued on the next day, as Andrew Carnegie was still under, under the, on trial for being accused of being a robber baron. Both the defense and the prosecution did a brilliant job, but I felt like that in concluding that Carnegie was not guilty of being a robber baron. Instead, he was a captain of industry, that Frick was to blame. And so, just those of you who are waiting on the outcome, yeah, that, just wanted to let you know. Also, we, I was able to attend Dixon Elementary School to attend a leader in me, a day that they had there out at Dixon Elementary. The kids did a great job, and it was, it was interesting. They had covered so many variety of topics. They did a great job. They were also packaging up bags of food, you know, they had an assembly line thing going. One kid would put the rice in, the other put the beans in, yeah, they were just working down the line, and every time they got, I think it was a thousand pounds, they'd let off a horn or something, kids would go crazy. So they, they loved that, they really got into it, and so, just a great job by the staff out at Dixon Elementary. I was very impressed with what they did there as well. Also, I'd like to recognize a couple of Onslow County citizens who distinguished themselves that were recognized by the North Carolina High School Athletic Association. Mr. Mike Smith, who was coach out at Camp Lejeune and at Northside High School, was recognized as the Bud Phillips Retiree Award, you know, very worthy recipient there. Congratulations to Mr. Mike Smith. Also, Monique Gidry, the, the coach of Jacksonville Cardinals basketball team, was recognized with the Courage Award, as she went through a period of time of health situation with her family and, and was able to work through that, persevere, and lead the Lady Cardinals to a great season, as they finished, you know, an East, East Champions, Champions of the East and all the way to the state championship, which they, they lost that game, but they had a great season, and you just want to recognize her as well. Also, the male coach of the year was also from Onslow County, Northside High School, recognized Coach Marshburn, Coach Tony Marshburn. In two years, he's gone 59 and 1, I think it is, which is unbelievable in basketball. You're playing, even on Monday, then playing again on Thursday. Yes, you don't have time to break down tape, you don't have time to look at what you did wrong that much, you know, so, and you're still able to have a run like that, where last, the year before last, he was undefeated. This past year, he ended up losing the state championship, but what a great run, you know, two years like that, and so, worthy of recognition there. I also like to thank those who spoke this evening, giving us information about the Children's Museum and the Memorial Gardens. I would also ask that you get out and vote tomorrow. A lot of those seats you're voting for are local elections, and, and keep in mind, those, those impact our lives more so probably than, than maybe at the state or the federal level. And so I encourage you to get out and vote, and let your voice be heard. Thank you.
Commissioner Buchanan?
I don't know if I can follow all these acts. Pat and Lee, I want to thank you so much. You know, I get, every year, I get a chance to do the proclamation at the Vietnam Memorial. Missed you two this past time. That's probably the first time I've seen you two miss, but Pat and Lee have been very instrumental in that Vietnam Memorial, received money from the city, received money from the county during the project over the last 10 years of putting this together, and it means so much to me, and all those Vietnam veterans welcome home. I mean, it means a whole lot, and the same thing with everybody else. The Children's Museum, you're working very hard to get your stuff done. Our staff, I mean, it's just so amazing how our staff come in front of us and present, and what's going on at the airport. One of the things that you might not understand, but the Consolidated Human Services, I heard Mr. Price asking, Sherry, but Sherry, Heidi, and then we have Angela Lee, the three of them, if you look at the Consolidated Services Building, look at what took place there, they are the instrumental people that did that, and I want to thank you for that, and I think if you keep an eye on this new one, it'll be nothing like that jail, because that jail was a nightmare, and I'm the first one to say it, and I think Jack Bright would agree with me. We have never had that happen since then, since all these other projects that we're on, but I want to thank the staff and the people for being here. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Neff?
I think it's kind of neat, you know, that we celebrate this as older American month. I think we all fit in that category, I think. Some of us more so than others, Paul, but anyway. But I, but I think it's kind of neat, because then we have the Children's Museum, and you know, they say that, that children are our most valuable resource, and I agree with that, but I also take it one step further. I think the elderly are probably one of our most valuable resources as well, and I know that because, you know, my father passed away last month, he was 85, and the people that I would visit with him in his home had so much experience, love, and wisdom, that I used to sit there and just listen to them and tell me stories about things that happened in the 40s, 30s, whatever, and it was fascinating, and you know, I just learned a lot. So I think it's neat that you guys are here representing both, both ends, you know, our future and our, our current, our present situation. Just the knowledge that you bring is, is awesome, because I know I learned a lot from my father, just listening to him, and listening to some of his stories. So I applaud your effort as well to be involved with our young children, I think that's fantastic. I can't say enough, and I'm going to get on this tangent again, about our staff. I can't say enough about the commissioners, the legal team, everybody within our staff, Sherry, for getting on this mental health detox crisis center project. This was started two, what, two years ago, okay? And we pushed it out there, we pushed it out there, we found a way to do it when people told us we couldn't do it, we couldn't find funding, we couldn't do this or do that, and you know, we didn't take no for an answer, because you know, we, we found a way without costing anybody any money. And what's disturbing is, you know, I heard a couple people make comments about, well, this is, you know, we need to focus more on this and that, not just this. You know, and my answer is, you got to crawl before you walk, and this is the first step. This is a big step to get a triage-type center here for, for mental health or detox, for substance abuse, to put a Band-Aid on it so we can get the people the right treatment. And the thing that people don't realize is that we're not stopping there. We're taking it one step at a time. We start here, we get it up and running, and then we move to the next phase. And the difference about this one is that your county commissioners and your county government is actively involved in this to ensure that everything is done correctly so that you, the citizens, the people that are requiring this treatment, are not going to be misled. We want things to be done properly, because you know, our citizens deserve it. So, again, I applaud the efforts of everybody here for doing that, that worked on that project, continue to work on that project. It's going to be a great day where we can cut the ribbon, because once we cut the ribbon, that means we're turnkey, we're going to open, and we're going to go. And you know, it's, it's drawn the attention of several, several other counties, and local governments, and they see what we're doing here, so, and that makes me proud that we can be the, the role model for the other counties to follow and pursue, and not to give up. So again, I thank all of you for doing that. I thank the task force member, David, Sherry, for your diligence, and all the other members of the, of the task force that are involved trying to get this project up and running. The only thing else I could tell you is, is that, two things, the airport is a fantastic place. I've traveled all over the world, and I've been here when our airport, yeah, anyway, no, our airport was just barren, and when you look at the airport now and the tremendous renovation that it has undergone, it is fascinating. I mean, I enjoy, you know, when I fly out of here, I enjoy going to our airport. It's been modernized, and it's going to continue to grow, and I can't thank you enough for all the work and hard work that you're putting in there as a director, making our airport modern and attracting businesses and attracting people to come here to Jacksonville. You know, they can't say Albert J. Ellis Airport is a small-time airport, because it's not, you know? We're starting to see a lot more traffic in here, which means there's a lot more people and potentially a lot more business, and that's a good thing for Onslow County. And the last thing I want to say is, I echo what Commissioner Price said. Tomorrow is Election Day, okay? Tomorrow's Election Day for various offices, and we as commissioners are looking forward to who the people are going to select in terms of our new commissioners. You know, it's hard for us as people sitting in political positions to openly support anybody, because that's not what we should do, you know, during a primary. You know, so we have to sit back and just watch and absorb everything. So I hope the right decisions are made tomorrow. I think our board is looking forward to the new members of our county commissioners to hit the ground running so that we can add to them up here with us, take some of the meetings off of our shoulders. But I think all the candidates that have, that have applied and are running for county commissioner, I think their heart's in the right place, they're doing it correctly, and I think I look forward personally to who's going to win. So, if you haven't voted yet, please do so. That's your right to go out and vote, okay? Go out and support your candidate, whoever it may be, and cast your vote, because it is important. Other than that, I have nothing else, and just want to say thank you for all that attended tonight, and have a safe trip home.
Thank you, Vice Chair. We have the speakers tonight from the Children's Museum, and of course, we have the Vietnam Memorial Gardens, that's a beautiful facility, I can tell you, it's, you can't miss it if you go down Highway 24 and you look over to, to the garden, it's just a beautiful facility, and then the Monfort Point Marine Memorial statue and monuments are there, and that just enhances the whole area. So I commend you for what you're doing with the Vietnam Veterans Organization to promote that. I commend the people that come in tonight and take your time, because we really had a crowded agenda tonight, and we had a lot of things we, we covered, we spent a ton of money tonight, but a lot of it is not ours, but we still, we still good at spending it. So anyway, I just wanted you folks to know that when, when we look at our budget, we have a certain pool of money that we budget for, for our nonprofit organizations, and everybody is competing for that one pool of money. It's, it's, people from the, you folks tonight from the Children's Museum, we got people that's competing for the money with the YMCA, that's another thing on the horizon. Then we have another group of people that's wanting to do the Marine Corps Museum, that's another group of people, and then Sturgeon City, that's another group of people, they're, they're looking at us for support. And then another thing that Commissioner Buchanan has brought up several times, there's a big movement to get a sports commission, a sports arena here, and that's another big group of people and a big pool of money. And then there's yet another group that's trying to, to put together the need for a civic center. All of those things take money, and all of those things takes a lot of planning, and the thing about it is, if we got different groups and different categories competing and lobbying for that money, it makes it hard for us to decide when we only have one pool of money, where that, where the, the funding needs to go, and then we have to look at priorities, and we have, really, we have a tough job deciding on where that money should go. It's really tough, because I'd like to say, we're going to give that, you know, some money to everybody, but that don't happen, because there's only so much money to go around. So anyway, I appreciate the ones coming tonight and your presentation and what you've done that, that's from last time you were here, and the walkers that's here showing us what you've got planned, and I, I really think that what you've planned here is a good endeavor. I don't know how long we got to, or you've, you know, put time into timeframe to get that done, but it's still, it's still a major concern and a major operation, so we'll get through it, it just may take some time. Other than that, I appreciate the staff coming tonight and doing the presentations. You all, as usual, do a super job in letting us know and the public know what we do and what we vote on up here. And these decisions that we made tonight, some of them were fairly quick, but I can tell you, every one of these board members, including myself, has sat down and gone over these agenda items and looked at every- these agenda items and looked at every single thing, and then we had questions. We always call staff and our legal team and our clerks and all the department heads, and we found out, and we get information prior to this, coming to this meeting, because it's better to have that information than it is to wait and not get it while we're sitting up here. But other than that, go out and vote tomorrow, exercise your right to vote, and vote your conscience, and I commend all the people that put their name on the ballots and signed up to run for office. I think the voters will make a decision tomorrow, and whoever the voters decide that they want to be in office, we're here to work with them. We have not personally, I haven't personally been involved in no campaigns, because it's not mine, and I just think that when the voters make a decision, that's what I'm happy with. So thank you all for coming. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. We adjourn.